Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody here to tonight's meeting of the Plan Zone Commission for October 3rd. Tonight, we do not have a public hearing, so we'll move right into our regular meeting agenda. Roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hepner.
Here.
Eichelberry.
Here.
Reinards.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Tomlin, here. Ingram.
Present.
Manus.
Here.
Garrington is excused. Schilling.
Here.
Stalk.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. And before I start the regular meeting, I'd like to introduce our new commissioner, Pat Schilling. She comes on board with all kinds of accolades, and I'd like to have her give a little speech just to explain who she is and what she's all about.
Well, thank you for having me. I moved to the Quad Cities in 1987, in Davenport in 1989. I was transferred down here through John Deere. We've stayed ever since. I graduated from Warrenburg College, and I'm a native Iowan. And I worked for Deere for a little over 37 years. And I retired as manager of Enterprise Industrial Hygiene, so I have worldwide responsibilities. And I've been a neighborhood leader for a little over 20 years now. So, thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Thank you, Pat. We will move on. Report of City Council activity, Laura.
Nothing major, just the 53rd Street rezoning and right-of-way vacation of Spring Street South 53rd is working its way through City Council. They're on their second consideration.
Thank you. Secretary's report.
Move to the floor.
Second.
Secretary's report has been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, it will stay as written. Report of comp plan, Laura, anything?
Not at this time.
Thank you. For zoning activity, we have one new business, case REZ 23-05, being the request of Anthony Properties to rezone 10.17 acres of Lot 1 of Phoenix Center, 6th Edition, in the 5600 block of Tremont Avenue, parcel X1203-01, from I-1 Light Industrial to RMF, multifamily residential district. The staff recommends case REZ 23-05 be forwarded to the City Council with a recommendation for denial based on the four followings, or findings. And I would so move.
Second.
Case REZ 23-05 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Laura, do you still have this? Scott?
Scott Cope's Development and Neighborhood Services. The second slide here shows the vicinity map, which we've shown at the public hearing. It's predominantly an industrial area in and around this subject property. And the slide after that shows you the zoning map and the land use map. And again, it's consistent with what's actually there, and it's industrial, except for the piece to the west, which is budding the reserve. So, as we stated at the beginning in our description, it's light industrial, it's light manufacturing, fabricating, processing, distributing, and warehousing is common uses for that district as the district is described in our zoning ordinance. And then, the proposing multiple-family residential district, which is characterized by high-density neighborhood environmentally, let me start that over. High-density neighborhood environment characterized by a mixture of housing types. The slide here is their option, one of their options. Option 1, they're trying to kind of repeat the same kind of rule, character, and feel to it by spacing the buildings out. As you'll note, there's only a 40-foot-wide narrow strip that connects this to Tremont Avenue. The second slide is similar, or the second option is similar. It has the clubhouse kind of surrounded by the parking, and a possible connection maybe in the future. We have included the applicant slides, which were in the packet last cycle, and they're here today as well. Gives you a little bit of the character of the area. And I just would like to remind you, this is what's possible to be built there, but as a commissionier, to look at any type of uses in the R, the MF, getting the old code mixed with the new code, the R-H, MF, high-density residential. So after we go through the pictures, that's the last one there, we have the public input. Property owners were notified on September 7th within 200 feet. The Quad City Times, we published a hearing notice in there on September 9th. And two weeks ago, we were here for the public hearing on September 19th. And again, we have only two protests at this time, and these are the same letters that were in the packet last time. And staff recommends, well, this was read at the beginning, but I can read it again. Staff recommends that commission accept the listed findings. Forward case REZ 2305 to City Council with a recommendation of denial with the listed findings. Finding number 1, the proposed rezoning to RMF, multiple-family residential, is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and adopted land use policies. Number 2, the introduction of residential use in an industrial area is not compatible with the zoning, land uses, or character of neighborhood property or nearby property. And number 3, the proposed amendment may have factors that could impact public health, safety, and welfare. And number 4, the rezoning of the property to RMF does create nonconformities, especially for the abutting industrial properties. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Scott. Commissioners, any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Manus.
Thank you. Matt, could you explain a little bit about number 3? What factors that could impact public health, safety, and welfare of the city? Just give us a little expansion of your thoughts on that matter.
So, my name's Scott. I'm filling in for Matt today. So, some of the features that kind of worry staff a little bit, and we've tried to get the most input we have. But the building, or the buildings, will be situated behind other development that's already there. If you go to the very first slide, it gives you a three-dimensional view of it. So, if you're an ambulance, or police, or fire, trying to get to this place, it might not be obvious that it's going to be behind that row of storage buildings. Especially if those buildings would go away, taller buildings were built, or if trees were built onsite for a buffer, you wouldn't be able to see the apartment buildings back there, and it may delay a response time. The other issue would be, it's only a 40-foot-wide strip that accesses Tremont to the rear, or to the main portion of the property. And should something, you know, should a vehicle, you know, have an accident there, two or three vehicles, and then you wouldn't be able to get by there potentially. So if you have an ambulance, you're trying to get in there, you know, you might have to go through the grass, or through bushes and trees and whatnot. So it could potentially be a problem, but it might not either. Depends on the nature of the event, and also the advent of, you know, the E-911, where people have maps to help locate things, so.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, would the petitioner like to step forward?
Sure would.
Provide us with your name.
Tom Pasternak, attorney of Davenport, and attorney for Anthony Properties. With me is Brian Shue, representative from Anthony Properties as well. So, haven't done one of these in a long time, guys, and then what do I get? I get a negative stamp recommendation on top of that one.
You need to come more often.
Well, you know, obviously so, what can I say? So, obviously, that's a wear 'em down. Anyhow, land use question. I mean, that's what this really comes down to. Is RM an appropriate land use for that property there, that 11-acre site? Okay? I know what they say. I mean, it's against the comprehensive plan. I've heard that argument before, all right? But the issue is that the comp plan is not, you know, insurmountable, okay? It can be changed. And one of the things that we need to talk about on this particular pattern is this, okay? We're looking at RM versus I-1. Those are really kind of what I would call, the RM is just one step of lesser density than the I-1 property. So, when we talk about appropriate land use, let's do this, all right? I think I've been here for over 30 years, you know, the particular property that we've been talking about in this entire area has, as far as I remember, been zoned I-1 for all that period of time, okay? When the new comp plan came in, or the new zoning, I think the reserve just came in. I think it was, what, 2019, 2018? Okay? And in fact, that was rezoned to residential just as that new comp plan came in. Well, it's 2019, and now we're at 2023, and I'm asking, what further development is happening on that property? Okay? Absolutely none. The property is set, languished, and at this particular point of time, the question is one of need, okay? Right now, when you take a look at it, what can you do to change the comp plan? You can change the comp plan based on marketability. Market conditions do drive comp plans. What I'm saying here today is, I've got RM directly to the west, okay? In fact, I'm asking for RM with the same developer, with the same type. So my question to you is, is that really an inappropriate land use? Okay? I don't think so. So saying that, I think in terms of balancing what we're going to do and how we're going to do it, let's take a look at just exactly the conditions that they said. The comp plan is against it, okay? But I think there's an argument, because the property is set for so long, and that there's RM next to it, that it is appropriate land use, okay? They talk about compatibility, okay? It's not compatible. Well, I guess compatibility is subjective, okay? Because, again, obviously, I'm arguing for my client, but I don't see that compatibility is really an issue. Scott, do you have that picture with, you know, all industrial, but it showed what was where, how, and what? Yeah, that'll do, that'll do.
Mr. Pasternak, can we keep your...
Yeah, I will try to do that. I just, I'm sorry, I should have gotten like a little pointer or something inside.
We may have one.
That's that?
Here is Tom.
Tom.
So...
This yellow button. It's a laser pointer.
Am I doing it wrong here, Kittle?
Yeah, turn it on first.
I'll turn it on. All right, so I'm not adept.
It's a slide button on this.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Want to appreciate it? So again, clearly, there we go. All right, I've got industrial to the north, no question about that, okay? Obviously, I've got what we have, the apartments to the west, okay? Technically speaking, to the south, I have nothing. It's all vacant. And it's been vacant for so long, which is part of my argument, as to how long we're going to continue to allow this. And then, of course, I have storage as, directly to the east. And I'm not sure that, when you talk about compatibility, I'm not sure that, how relevant that is. But the bottom line, I guess, is what I'm trying to say is, you know, we're talking about subjectivity, as far as I'm concerned. What's compatible, what isn't? I don't think that it's incompatible. And if it's not incompatible, then I guess, my impression is, it's compatible. The third issue that they had was this public health and whatever else argument. But quite frankly, no matter what you put in that property, it's going to have the same strip of 40 feet, and it's going to have the same problem in terms of development. So the same impediments for I-1 will occur, and that may be even more so, because there'll be bigger trucks and the like. So, I'm not sure I really sustain that argument as well. And the final argument is that we want to preserve I-1 property. And I think that's probably a very good argument, except for the fact that when I look at things, there's a lot of I-1 property that's still out there. I counted about 700 acres of vacant I-1 property already outstanding in the city of Davenport. And I think you guys just recently put Sloper Town in, which, I know it needs to be developed and whatever else, but that was I-1 too. And that's about another 235 acres, as I recall. So, from my perspective, I guess we are talking simply land use, okay? And the real question that you have is, is the RM designation and usage of this property inappropriate? I just don't see it. Brian, would you like to make any comments?
Good, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for the pointer, and sorry for moving around on you.
No, it's all good, it's all good. It's been a while.
Yes, you gotta train me.
Retrain you.
Or is that what, nah?
You've been trained.
Too old as a dog.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is for staff, and I hate to do this, but it's going to be a memory test for you. With the multifamily to the west that's recently been developed, do you recall if we, did the comp plan committee take a look at that? Because obviously, that would have been in conflict with the, with the land use, future land use plan.
So here's what happened. This land, prior to the code change in 2019, was zoned agricultural. When the 2019 code was approved, staff at that time marked this land as residential multifamily. There was no change to the comprehensive plan as part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schneider.
So, I have a question on the public health, safety, and welfare. Because I concur with what Scott says about, you know, the entrance, and the problems, I mean, it's different if it's a factory versus if it's, you know, residential. Is there a way to mitigate that some way?
I think, again, my issue is that that argument should be set for any kind of site plan review, but specifically, what we're talking about is land use. But yes, I mean, we're taking a look at that extensively, and we are going to work that into the concept plan. But at this particular point of time, it's pretty hard to get out of the gate, and so, you know, you can rezone the property.
I agree. I think, you know, it's important to look at all of the criteria, though, you know, if it's to make the land use change.
Ma'am, all I can say is, we probably wouldn't have put an offer in unless we didn't think we had a remedy to that problem.
Got you, makes sense. Thank you.
Commissioner Schilling.
Thank you. I had some questions, too, if that were to change, and you brought families in, and you have a lot of kids running around, you have only 40 feet, and then you do have light manufacturing, and I saw there was some fabrication. The problem, too, is noise that you're going to generate, and how will that affect the people that live there? What type of barriers are you suggesting between your complex and the light industrial? Because there will be more noise, and I don't think we can ask the people who are already there, the industrial residents, to meet those noise requirements.
Are you talking about them mitigating noise? Is that what you're saying?
Mitigating noise and keeping, I mean, 40 feet is not very much. And if you have families with kids, what are the barriers to keep them out of the industrial area?
I guess the issue will be, again, the nature of the design. As you saw from the concept plans, you saw that was mostly packed to the east, okay? So the north will be, for lack of better words, where the industrial is at, is pretty much going to be park, recreational area, where you like. Again, you want to speak to this issue, because you're probably more...
Sure.
I'm sure if they allow it, can Mr. Sch...
Absolutely. Just please introduce yourself.
Okay. My name's Brian Shue. I'm the Director of Development for Anthony Properties out of Dallas. We're the owners of the reserve. We developed it, I think, four or five years ago now. And that's the whole purpose for being here. It's been a very successful project for us. We've got 196 units there. They've been 100% occupied ever since it was developed, and we've got a waitlist of over 100 people right now. And so, we're simply trying to satisfy the demand for housing in this particular market. But to answer your question, so Phase 1 is fenced in and gated, and we're calling this Phase 2. I don't know if that's officially what it is or not, but this would likely have the same sort of secured area around it. So, the accessway, the 40-foot-wide strip, that would probably have a gate towards the, I guess that's the west end of it, where it gets back to the bulk of the 10 acres. We would have a gate there, and then a perimeter fence around the rest of the property. Now, as far as the noise, were you asking about how we would mitigate the noise that our project would create, or the other way around?
Well, I think, you know, one of the concerns that some of the letters have is, they do generate noise. And if your residents complain about the noise, I don't think you can expect the people in the industrial area to reduce their noise at that point.
Right.
Because they've been there, they're in an approved zone, and there will be noise coming from there. So my question is, are you going to put natural barriers that could mitigate noise between the industrial area and your complex?
I think around at least two sides, that would be the north side and the west side, there's, I mean, it's virtual forest, which creates a barrier in and of itself. The properties to the east, I keep having to turn my head, because I think north is that way. The properties to the east are self-storage units, which, you know, there's no manufacturing or anything going on there. It's very quiet. So, I would imagine, and, you know, again, like Tom said, we've got to get past go first before we develop this, and this is very conceptual, but, you know, in all projects that we do that have a different kind of a neighbor, perhaps, we do landscape berms and barriers and things like that. So, my guess is that there would be some significant plantings along the eastern boundary that's shared with the self-storage units to the east. And then, again, we have the natural boundary of the trees, big trees, to the north and the west already, and there's nothing to the south. The question was, is it currently a problem? I've never heard any complaints. We've got buildings, let's see, three buildings on the north side of Phase 1 that back up to some of the same industrial users, and I've never heard, I've never heard any of our residents complain. Now, that said, we're the owners of the property, we're not the management company, that's a different company. But I do, you know, stay in touch with them, obviously, since we own the property, but I've never heard any complaints about, about noise.
Has staff heard any complaints out of any of the residents because of the current industrial?
We have not heard complaints. I haven't looked into that specifically, but I do have a point of clarification.
Okay.
The property to the north is currently under development. It will be Seven Hills Paving out of Macochera. So it is a paving company that will be constructing facilities there. So, the land to the north, directly to the north, is under development currently.
Right. I was referring more to properties of the north of the existing...
Right.
...residents.
Yeah, I haven't heard any complaints, but there could be that I'm not aware of.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hepner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, I'm thinking that the industrial would be working on a first shift basis, and that the residents would be home on a second and third shift basis, where noise would not potentially be an issue, and that was directed more to Pat. Just a thought. I guess I'd like to commend the developer on the first phase. I think it's a very well-done development.
Thank you.
I'd like to see more of that stuff in Davenport. I think it's nice for the community. I think it makes sense to extend into a Phase 2, and I'm wondering, is there a way to connect Phase 1 and Phase 2, possibly?
So, the boundaries are, they're contiguous. As far as vehicular access is concerned, it would be very difficult to do that.
Topography.
There's a creek and topography as well, yeah.
So it'd be cost prohibitive.
Cost prohibitive, right. Now, that said, the Goose Creek Trail does come, and it butts, well, it goes, I guess, technically through our Phase 1 property, which then therefore abuts the Phase 2 property. So, thank you, there's a good picture right there. So, you know, they could be connected by pedestrian access. I know there's no vehicles allowed, golf carts or anything like that on the Goose Creek Trail, but it would be pretty easy to connect the two. And we will have, I mean, the plan is to have some of the common amenities, I guess, be for both phases.
Sure.
And then some of them be separate.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. Well done.
Thank you, Commissioner Hepner. Commissioner Reinards.
Thank you. I have a concern, only, not so much with the existing property that will butt up against your proposed property, but being zoned industrial for the storage buildings, we leave ourselves open, as we've seen in the past, that property being sold and something else going in. That's maybe a heavier industrial. And then we've got a situation where it's approved by zoning, but your Phase 2 is already there, which can, in fact, present a conflict down the road. Doesn't, you know, present a conflict now, but given the circumstance where the people that own the storage buildings decide they want to sell the property, and somebody else is going to bring in heavy manufacturing, they can do that because it's already zoned. So the potential is that we could have a situation where, and because the zoning's already set up, where we have to deal with a lot of industrial butting up to your Phase 2. So I think rejecting it gives us the benefit of potentially a safeguard down the road.
Feel free to comment if you...
It's hard to look into the future, I guess. I mean, to speak, well, to speak to the seller, excuse me, the owner of the self-storage property, we've tried to buy the vacant 1 acre that he still has left for better access. He didn't, he wasn't interested in that. Then we offered to buy the entire project, the self-storage and, you know, get into the self-storage business in Davenport. And he rejected that as well. So I don't know that he's interested in selling. And the offer we made, we felt like was more than fair. But, I mean, could it happen? Absolutely. Where a heavier use comes in there, I guess what I would say to that is, you know, we have, we have built properties, in fact, in Cedar Rapids, actually, where part of the property does back up to a heavier industrial use that was already there. And, you know, the other side of the property backs up to a power substation, which isn't real, you know, pretty either. But that property has maintained a 100% occupancy record as well, since it opened, and it opened before the reserve did. So, you know, if the demand stays, and growth stays, and Amazon keeps building that sort of stuff, then I don't necessarily think bothers people that much.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Reinards. Commissioner Manus.
Thank you. This is for staff. I am wondering if you have considered recommending that the applicant also apply for a comprehensive plan amendment in this area that would go along with the zoning amendment? Has that been discussed?
No, it has not been discussed.
And the staff does consider this a violation of the comprehensive plan?
I think violation is a strong word, but it's not in conformance with the comprehensive plan.
I know, at times, we have looked at adjacent areas and have considered a zoning change to be more of specific detail than the comprehensive plan, which is a more general guide. I'm just asking more from the staff on how you read this case.
Sure. So it's a fairly intact industrial corridor from 46th Street up to Veterans Memorial Parkway. The zoning, the entire stretch, is I-1, light industrial. We, as staff, in terms of the comprehensive plan, that was a large consideration of that. The other part of that is when we are reviewing, tangentially related, but when we're reviewing residential next to industrial, every single other development we've seen in the city, it's not interacting in between, in the middle of that corridor. It's on the edge of the corridor, or designed to have its back to the industrial user, not interface with it. And so that was a large part of our consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah. I would also say that...
Yeah, I would also say that our code takes a strong stance against protecting the uses in an I-1 or I-2 district by making sure certain uses that might not appear to be incompatible, they make sure that they're not even allowed in there. And so, that these future complaints about, oh, there's noise, and what happens, our noise ordinance actually triggers a reduction of allowed noise if there's complaints, or if there's nearby residential uses, then it's more of a, it's more onerous on those industrial owners. They have to actually be reducing their volume of noise based on our noise ordinance. And so, that's one part that also plays into the nonconformity section that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Manas. Any additional comments or questions? Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious about the property directly to the south. Do you know the owner of that, that would have access down onto 53rd?
I believe it's owned by the flooring company, is that right?
The Phelps family.
Phelps, is that who they are?
Okay.
Okay, I think their business is just to the west, perhaps. But anyway, I have, I have not approached them. I think our feeling was that the subject property, the 10 acres, was more contiguous, if you will. Plus, if you look at the topography of the Phelps, is that right? Phelps property, it's, it's got some significant topography to it. I mean, the subject property obviously does as well, and it's just off the screen to the south, but it's, it would be a pretty challenging piece of property.
I was just... I was just considering, you know, a different access route. My, I guess my other question, I don't recall, is, is there currently sidewalks there on Tremont?
That I don't know.
It starts to the north of the subject property.
And only goes north?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no sidewalk south to 53rd?
Correct.
Okay.
And the other, excuse me, but the other issue with the Phelps property, I believe there's a significant amount of floodplain on it.
Okay. I was, I was, I'm just thinking along the lines of if there was another way to tuck it back in there with, you know, different access.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, you done?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tomlin.
I guess just, just as a follow-up to Commissioner Johnson's question about that southern parcel, is that the Pheasants Forever parcel, or is that gone? Or is, I'm not even sure, is that the right group? They used to have a plot for, that they just left alone.
I know there's like a garden area or tree area north of the carpet flooring place. And I don't know, maybe that's the land you're referring to.
I don't know if it's that one or the one just west of the floor.
But the Phelps family farm, as far as I know, that's been row-cropped for a long time.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. The additional questions or comments? Final call? Petitioner, any additional comments? Time's up.
Usually is. Can I get it done quick? Anyway, that, basically, I guess I need to just go back and reemphasize that it's not like this property hasn't been offered for I-1 for the longest period of time. And I think market dictates what happens. I believe that based on foregoing, it's going to, it's infill. It's going to take a lot for an industrial user to use it, all right? The property, as you saw, to the south, is going to have its challenges as well. I just, again, I'd hate to see a good development go down the drain that's actually, in my mind, very compatible with the existing terrain and with the existing area. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Commissioner Heffner.
I just had, I just had one more question for the developer. How much cut and fill do you anticipate doing on the site if you were successful?
That is a, that's an unknown right now, to be honest with you. We're doing some geotechnical studies of it right now.
Okay.
We've heard from the seller that the site is, has got some very soft soil conditions. One of the things that we're trying to do, you know, this is all pending the soil's report, but...
Which will be ambiguous in itself.
I'm sorry?
Which will be ambiguous in itself.
Yeah, probably so. The buildings that you see there, the footprints, that could either be a 28-plex or a 33-plex. And the difference between the two is the 33-plex is just a split-level building. So, on the front side, it's three floors, on the backside it's four, obviously to take advantage of the slogan, topography. So, I mean, you know, we would, as expensive as cut and fill is, we'd want to limit that as much as possible. So, we're thinking that these would all be 33-plexes and then split-level so that we can reduce that cut and fill.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Heffner. Seeing no additional questions, I want to remind everybody that a vote of yes is for denial. Please consider that before you make your vote. That being said, roll call, please. Commissioner Tomlin.
Heffner.
No.
Ickleberry.
Yes.
Reinhart.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Tomlin, no. Manas.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
Stalk.
Yes.
Schneider.
No.
The motion does carry, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. That would conclude the zoning activity. We have no subdivision activity tonight. Future business, anything, Laura?
So, we have one final plat for our October 17th meeting.
Thank you. Communications? Anything? Other business, anyone? Seeing none? All in favor of adjournment, signify by.
By.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good to see you guys again.
Good to see you. Good luck.
Thank you.